Okay, I call this meeting to order at six forty P M. We begin with public input. If there's anybody in the public online that wants to speak, please identify yourselves. Seeing, hearing none, we'll move on to the student report. We are lucky to have Sophie Sakay here tonight, class of two thousand and twenty four, to give the student report.
All right, so a few things academically coming up. A P exams start next week, and they follow the week after that. Very exciting, but the S A T is this upcoming Saturday, or sorry, not this upcoming, the week after this Saturday. For fine arts, we have the senior art portfolio show, May eighth through the nineteenth. Notorious Spring Fling is tomorrow, and the start of the notorious festival season will be marked by that. Chorus and band music and their art, or sorry, their parks competition at Six Flags will be coming out, which is exciting. Some notable athletic matters, softball is playing Winfield tonight, and girls lacrosse is playing Tewksbury tonight. And then right now, there's a track meet going on at home against Triton. Some miscellaneous, there's senior science fundraisers. And then there's athletic and community service opportunities listed on the school website. And youth tutoring goes on every Wednesday after school, which I partake in, so it's very fun. And then something that I've been working on lately is I applied for a two-week summer program, like a college summer program. It's non-credit, but it's about human physiology, pathology, and disease, and I got accepted into it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Where is that?
It's at Harvard.
Excellent.
Nice.
Thank you.
It does not sound like a fun summer to me, but.
Is it residential? Do you get to stay there?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, I'm really excited.
Say hi to Dr. House for us.
Congratulations.
I will. Thank you.
Awesome. The tutoring program, who do you tutor?
So three to four is middle schoolers, and then four to five is elementary school.
And do they do that here, or you go?
It's in the media center, yeah.
Do a lot of people, do a lot of elementary kids come up or?
More elementary than middle school, surprisingly.
Okay.
How do kids find out about it? Is it teacher recommendation, or is it?
It's with the youth services, North Reading Youth Services. So I think that they send out emails to like parents and stuff, and they offer it. And it's not, it's no commitment, so you don't have to show up every time. You can come and go as you want.
I'm gonna go off track on two different things. Number one, since you graduate next year, and I have two middle schoolers, and I don't know anything about college applications yet. Do you start tours already? I mean, have you already been doing that? Is that like on the summer agenda, or?
Um.
I'm just curious.
I'm an only child, and my mom has no clue what to do either, so.
Nice.
We don't really know, but I think I'm gonna go next summer, yeah. But I know people in my grade that have already started and.
Yeah.
Don't be intimidated.
Yeah.
The tours themselves are, they want you, at least according to the tours. When it gets to admissions, who knows, but when you go to the tours, they're like, they're selling to you, so it's a fun experience.
Okay.
They really wanna make it positive.
And then if anybody didn't think I was an old man, like, this is literally gonna be a get-off-my-lawn moment. But like, driving by the track today, and like, there's so many people parking on the grass down there. Is that a big issue that's starting again, or, I don't know, is that just a track issue, or do you know?
Probably just that.
An overflow, yeah.
Yeah?
I think cause softball's home too.
It's cause everything's there at once.
I think baseball was going on too.
I don't see it that often.
Oh, yeah, yeah, baseball too.
I hadn't noticed it, but I was just like, I don't know, I felt like the old man, like, they're on my yard.
I noticed it too.
Get on my lawn.
It's tough for me to say, but you are old.
Yeah.
I am.
Certainly coming across that way.
I know.
Uh, I was gonna, Sophie, I was gonna ask, did you take part in the reality fair a couple weeks ago?
Uh, yeah, I did. I thought it was really fun.
Oh, did you? Oh, good.
We checked her out, didn't we?
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, you did.
We did. Was it useful or not? I don't know.
I thought it was useful.
Imagine they're not here, and you're.
No, I thought it was useful, but there were people that were very upset, and they let, like, were living with their parents, like hypothetically, and. Or they didn't submit the form in time, so they got teacher, but I think that, I think that was good, cause then teachers got a lot more respect from students, understanding like financial things.
That, just, cause if you, you got to pick what your job was, but you gotta sign the first-year salary of that. But if you didn't pick anything, you gotta sign the teacher to show what a first-year teacher makes.
Yeah.
Yes, teachers are trying to, you know, get ready for the union contract next year, so. Um, well, thank you very much, Sophie, for coming, and you're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you can leave as well if you have other stuff to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the reality fair was fun, although we got, we just checked people out at the end, so.
It was, it wasn't, it was fun though.
Yeah.
It was also, what's that? Well, hopefully, we helped them avoid that. A couple people we had to send back and say, you need to do a little, little work on these numbers, they're not quite working out.
I mean, the hard part is like sticking to a budget afterwards, but like, I mean, rich bit points when people are coming up, like, they were splitting their food budget, cause they're living together. It's like, doesn't work that way. You still have two people's food.
Right.
Okay, so we're gonna jump ahead. I don't know if anybody's online, but.
Yep.
Yeah, for the budget. Just, well, just go ahead. We're gonna jump ahead to the school budget vote for the school budget. Okay, just cause I think that's probably the bigger draw tonight. So I'll turn it over to, I guess, Michael Connolly, Assistant Superintendent Connolly, to lead us through the fiscal year twenty-four budget vote.
Excellent. So we are at that time where we've sort of gone through the process and received sort of the final numbers from the town. And, you know, we worked very, very collaboratively with the, what's known as the finance planning team. And like, like past years, there's always a lot of, you know, creative thinking and then back and forth that happens from the public hearing to the time that we need to vote the budget to prepare for the town meeting. And I think that's what's really gone on over the last, the last few weeks, so. A lot of work's gone into it, and this is intended to present an update to the numbers and how we're hoping to bring everything to a conclusion this evening. So to kind of walk you back where we started, the original budget recommendation, thirty-seven million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and four dollars, that we've been presenting back from the beginning of March. Again, just as a reminder, that's a little more than two million dollars, or a five point eight percent increase over our fiscal year twenty twenty-three. We met as a finance planning team and heard from the town administrator, Mr. Goberto, and members of the chairs and vice chairs of select board and finance committee. And we essentially got the final revenue plan number from the community. And the revenue plan is going to allow one-time use of free cash, which we did a year ago. And there's also that occurring as well on the municipal side. That is an increase over the amount that was previously part of the revenue plan. But when you look at what the revenue plan is able to support, and this number increased due to a variety of factors, the House Ways and Means Committee released their budget just before April break, and then those numbers posted over the April school vacation week. So we were confidently able to add some additional revenue. The House budget increased, actually doubled the minimum aid per pupil in the Chapter Seventy program. So that resulted in about additional sixty-eight thousand dollars of revenue. There were some additional charges and so forth, and you looked at the final cherry sheet posted by the House Ways and Means, so I think it netted to a little over fifty thousand. So there's always some last-minute changes, and we've worked very closely and collaboratively with the members of the community and the finance planning team to come to the sort of the best final offer we could this evening in terms of what the school budget recommended funding guideline amount is. And that's a budget of thirty-seven million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars, which is a four and a half percent increase over our fiscal twenty-three budget appropriation. And that, just so we know what we're talking about, that's a thirty-five million, seven hundred and nine, three hundred and thirty-dollar amount, and that's our current budget. So the gap from our recommendation to the final revenue plan amount is one point three percent of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. When we were standing here a few weeks ago at April tenth or so, last year, just almost two weeks ago, that amount was six hundred and seven thousand and five hundred and nine dollars. So a lot of work's gone into reduce that amount, and again, to think creatively and to put our heads together to find not only additional revenue and look at fixed costs and look at, you know, areas of funding in the school budget that can be considered sort of that one-time, that would meet that one-time definition to get where we are today. And we just appreciate all the collaboration by the town administrator and members of the select board and finance committee to get us to certainly a number that's not easy, but a number that's much better than it was just a short, you know, two and a half weeks ago. So we've talked about the budget a lot, so I'm not gonna kind of rehash what's in our budget. We've had a couple of presentations to the community already. So the plan to sort of balance the budget and bring the school department budget within, within balance is reflected here. I'm gonna kind of walk through each line. At the public hearing, we talked about the first few of these items, and I think there was general consensus that when we release the budget in mid-February and then start presenting and deliberating on the budget in March, there's always changes that happen. We get updated information, we get updated kindergarten enrollment numbers, and we talk about some user fees. So things have happened that we now can comfortably make these changes without any significant impact. So the first line item here is one of those. We now know we only need one mid-day kindergarten run. There's only gonna be one half-day day program based on the enrollment in kindergarten for next year. We had budgeted for two, cause it was uncertain in February, so we can make this reduction safely, and that's what is reflected there. Discretionary line item reductions, I'm kind of consolidating that. There's really three items behind here. We've identified these. We know what they are, one of which is food service maintenance line. We've historically in the last few years have carried a ten thousand dollar line item to specifically address a preventative maintenance plan on our food service kitchen equipment. We all know that the food service program has done very, very well under the kind of universal free mail program. That's started with the U S D A, it's been kind of supplemented now by the state, and we can safely shift those expenses to the food service revolving account. And it's an appropriate expense to be charged there. You know, other areas here, we now know there's sort of less kind of coverage and substitute needs district-wide than we were in certain areas in terms of nursing coverage, and that we can make a reduction of about ten thousand dollars in substitute coverage. In another areas, we were carrying a line for potential separation costs of an additional retirement that may have happened that we're not aware of that maybe after the budget was approved. We're confident that that's maybe not gonna be the case, so we can reduce another line by a ten thousand dollars. So that, that's really what's behind that thirty thousand. We've sort of identified those, but what we're saying is it's at the district level. It's not impacting the schools, the expense budgets, or anything on the education area, instructional area on the equation. We've talked about this. We did increase the bus user fee for the first time in several years, based on the fact that we are seeing, seeing an increase in those rates next year. And it's even gonna increase in the future, so we did increase the bus cost. That information already went out to the community. And that's, that's gonna yield twenty thousand dollars of additional revenue. So that, that's a reflection here that we can kind of shift funding from the operating budget to the revolving account.
Mr. Connolly, just to interrupt for one second, so I don't forget later on. At the last meeting, you had indicated one person had reached out with concerns. Has there been any other concerns expressed about?
About the bus user fee increase? No, there's not.
Thank you.
Nothing I'm aware of, yeah, so there's not. And what we're actually seeing, the registrations are trending at the very same pace that they were a year ago, under the old fee structure.
Do we think we're gonna be sufficient with the buses we have?
I think we'll be very in a similar situation than we are this year.
So some waiting lists.
Some waiting lists, but small, at the middle school and high school only. Full-day kindergarten, that was a, that was a topic that we did talk about at the public hearing. The original budget proposal did include an effort to reduce that from three thousand to fifteen hundred dollars. And then, as we moved through deliberating the budget and saw some of the challenges based on other drivers of the budget, like fixed costs and other areas that were, that were going up, we felt like to do that, we would have to really dip into, I guess, the reserve that's in the full-day kindergarten account, or a projected balance of carryover funds. So we, we wanna commit to working towards free, free full-day kindergarten, although we can't, we don't feel like we can do that at the same level and go from three thousand to fifteen hundred. But we do feel like, based on our, our plan to try to get to free full-day kindergarten over a number of years, and might have to kind of moderate and stretch out over a larger years, potentially, is one way to look at it. But we feel like a commitment to continue that effort is important, and we're prepared to recommend that that fee, when we vote this budget, go from three thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars. Not the reduction we had hoped for, but still showing a commitment level that we're committed to work towards the ultimate goal that is reflected in our strategic plan, to get to a free, universal, full-day kindergarten program. And the reason why that's zero is I don't think it's prudent to add, add funding and increase the budgetary offset in full-day kindergarten. I think we can make that reduction and still meet the current offset that is budgeted and not put, but not put additional stress on that revolving account, based on the future years that we're receiving. Now, we certainly, the next phase of these are items that we've all talked about. These certainly involve staffing positions. These next three positions, as you can see, it says the word new next to them, so these are positions that we don't currently have. They were positions that we had proposed as part of our strategic plan initiatives, that were, that was part of our recommended budget. And we would have to kind of defer these to future budget years. We certainly still feel they're important. We still feel like moving to a model where we have three school adjustment counselors at each elementary school, and the middle school and the high school certainly is, is important and something we wanna work towards. We just, based on the budgetary challenges, we would not be able to achieve that next year. But just to be clear, it's not a position we have currently. We are, we're proposing a one point oh academic interventionist, to sort of professional position that we were, we were gonna enhance the tutoring model that's in place currently, and we would have to defer that another year and not do that next year. We were proposing a point five academic interventionist, similar position at the middle school level, and that, that would have to be deferred another year as well. So again, new positions that were part of our modified-level services budget request. The next three positions are positions that we do have currently. The next recommendation is to reduce a grade-level position at the little school. This would, we actually, based on information that we now have, we feel like this is just a necessary, necessary enrollment-driven reduction. And we don't feel like that's certainly gonna impact class sizes significantly, and it's certainly gonna, certainly maintain class sizes within the recommended guideline that we've always striven for at the elementary level. And that's certainly between eighteen and twenty-two students, and then at the lower primary grades, we really wanna stay between eighteen and twenty. And making this reduction, we would still, based on information we have today, that we maybe did not have a couple months ago, that we would still be in those, those recommended levels. So it's not a significant impact. The next position, this is, we've certainly have worked over a number of years dating back to two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, to kind of revamp our digitizing learning model. And we, for a number of years, had added digital learning specialists at each elementary school, at the middle school and the high school, as well as district-level positions to continue to enhance our technology initiatives and integration into the classroom. So this would be a step back of our current staffing level and our current delivery of services at the elementary level. So we currently have a designated digital learning specialist at each elementary school. That certainly provides some instruction into the classroom as a specialist, also provides support to classroom educators and so forth. So this would be going back towards sort of a shared model between the hood and the little school. We would have two digital learning specialists shared between the three elementary schools. So that, that was, that's certainly an impact. It's certainly our vision to, and our desire to have a designated specialist at each, at each school. Yeah, Mr. Buckley.
I just wanna clarify, most likely would be one at the batch and one shared between the.
Mr. Connolly, one quick question that I forgot to ask for the workshop. So essentially, we're reducing the F Ts by one point four over what we have right now. Could be a proposed three point five, we're going down, we're gonna reduce one point four. In terms of health insurance, do we know if there'll be any savings in health insurance on, on the positions that are actually changing? And I know sometimes it depends on.
I mean, there's so many variables in that, in that question in terms of changing of life events, and, you know, who may be coming on, who may be.
Well, just, I mean, if we're reducing one position, I mean, is there, is there any savings in that one position in health insurance or not? I mean, that could, that could just be part of the discretionary.
It's not gonna be, it won't be a savings on our side.
It's above the line.
So it's more in the, in the revenue plan on.
I thought it's after the line now for us, cause we, it's after the cut, I thought now, right?
It's part of the, it's part of the revenue plan, but it's not, it's not part of expenses that we directly pay on our operating budget.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay, that's fine.
And you probably won't really know the impact until.
No, I didn't, I just didn't know. I mean, yeah, it's just something that could, for the last line, it could even be something that could be impacted there potentially, if it was, so.
Okay.
And I'll just add too, I think Michael may have mentioned this, but we don't see these two positions we just spoke about impacting.
People.
Anyone's position. People are.
Correct.
This is due to attrition or movement.
Yeah, I meant, I forgot to mention that, correct. So the next reduction would be a point four F T reduction, academic position at the high school. We do feel like we can make this reduction and not significantly impact certainly the education or delivery of services at the high school. Enrollment has reduced at the high school over the last, you know, several years. We have not, fortunately, have not had to make a reduction there. And they, the majority of the class sizes that at one point in time, when there was a bubble of students moving through the high school, certainly shortly after we opened the middle school and the high school campus, the new building, where class sizes were very much over at the optimum level. And we certainly had advanced placement classes and honest classes and core academic classes that were above the level we'd wanna see that's optimum, optimal for student learning. And this reduction, relatively small, we don't think it would have a significant impact, and we would still have class sizes. Certainly, that would be optimum for, for education at the high school level. That leaves about twenty thousand dollars remaining. We're confident that we could identify, and we have ideas already of where that remaining twenty thousand dollars could be identified that would not impact any instruction or expense budgets at the school level. That's why I'm referring to a district level. I think with the position, this scenario does assume that we would fund that one additional position. So Mr. Buckley's saying it might be a two point four existing reduction, but we would gain one position of the three point five that we had recommended originally, and that is the STEM coordinator position. And there is, there is some efficiencies gained based on achieving that coordinator position. And with the curriculum leaders that are in existence, that we know there would be some area of savings already that would help us fund the remaining twenty thousand dollars as well. So all in all, making these reductions, although we never wanna see positions, and we never wanna take a step back, we're still trying to do that in a way that we think is least harmful to education and least harmful to the education to students at all levels. And we're still trying to, as best we can, under these financial challenges, to achieve our strategic plan and our highest priorities that are in our strategic plan. And although this doesn't achieve that at our fullest level, I think in some ways, we still are working towards doing that. And being able to fund the coordinator position, the STEM coordinator position, really allows us to move the, and align curriculum and instruction and really address the leadership, curriculum leadership model that's been really deferred for too many years, after budget cycle after budget cycle. And we really have gotten to the point where we don't feel that that could continue to be deferred. That's really why it was the administration's highest of priorities and why we discussed that a lot in many of our budget deliberations throughout, throughout this process. And then I think just a commitment to, although not to the degree we would like to, commitment to work towards reducing the full-day kindergarten tuition fee for families. We are, we have made significant progress from where we were a few years ago, at the highest tuition rate in the Commonwealth, to a tuition rate that would be much more reduced, although we still, when you look at the geographic area of some other communities, we're still, we're still higher than we would like to be. So we're still, the goal is ultimately to be, have free, universal, full-day kindergarten. And where I think we're showing a commitment to do that still. So ultimately, even with the proposed reductions, I think we are maintaining educationally-syllowed student-teacher ratios that are appropriate at the elementary level and the secondary level for, for student learning. We are maintaining our academic support systems. We, we made a field to kind of enhance it with the interventionists, but we do have the tutoring model that's being funded, and we do have the support systems in place with some of the S R funding for another year. We're maintaining our nursing staff and health and safety services for students, which we felt was important. That was not, that's why it's not reflected on the reduction list. We're continuing to address social, emotional, and mental health needs, again, maybe not to the extent we would desire, but we're maintaining and we're, and we think we're certainly, are positioned to address, address the social, emotional needs of students, and that's a, remains a high priority. I just talked about the curriculum leadership model. The one-to-one program is still in existence. We still have the, the technology support and technicians, some of which are funded through S R, some of which we've been able to fund through our operating budget, is still in place to maintain the support system that we think is necessary to adequately maintain the one-to-one program. And we have the funding that's in place to obviously properly maintain our five schools, our four campuses within our building grounds and our operating budget. So that, that's really what this budget would, would achieve. So I know it's gonna be discussion and deliberation, but this evening, I think we're prepared. I think it's, that time has come, with town meeting being several weeks, you know, away, June twelfth, to vote the budget this evening. And this would be the recommended motion we would, we would ask, but discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. So first, any questions? Any questions online?
I'm not seeing any at the moment.
Okay, any comments by anybody?
First, I wanna say how much I appreciate the, the hard work that goes into it. These ten slides represent hundreds of hours of collective effort. So, and it's just, you know, this has been boiled down, but this is a massive amount of work and, and a lot of effort to get to this point. The other point I'd say is, you know, it seems, it seems like it's sort of easy to get to these numbers, and I know we're expressing the pain that's in there, but it's not. I mean, it's just, you start at a point of what can I do within the budget, and you sort of see, it sort of feels like, oh, it just works out. It's not easy, and, and I just appreciate what, not only the level of effort, but, but how we can make it work as painlessly as possible. So thank you.
Rich?
Mr. Connolly, you said at the beginning that, and it's certainly true, the strong work of the financial planning team with. work of the financial planning team with members of the select board and the school committee and, and, and the town administrator and the town finance director and you, Mr. Connolly, and, and Dr. Daly, and how, you know, we, once again, we got creative and, and did manage to squeeze as much out of that, out of the revenue that we could, that we could. And we do that, and that happens every year. And I, I just feel like this year, it just did not get us quite as far as, or really as far as it has in past years. So we, we've worked that magic. And then after that, we worked the magic on our budget requests and, and, and things have worked out really, seem to work out really well. And this year, we, we see more pain. And, and it's unfortunate. I'm really grateful that we're able to still move forward in a couple of our key initiatives that I think really impact families and, and will have a positive impact on, on some, on education. But there's no doubt there's pain here. And, and if, and if it hadn't been for an enrollment, you know, drop in, in that, in the, at one school, then we'd have a lot more pain to face because we'd have to fund that extra teacher. We're just, in a way, fortunate that that's the way it worked out this year. But, so I, you know, we've gotten to here and I think this is where we're going to be. And that's acceptable, but it was not easy and it's, and not pain-free for sure.
Right. I appreciate the, the work you put in finding opportunities to, to find the funding for the STEM coordinator. And I appreciate the way too, Dr. Daly, you described it as maybe one step back to take two steps forward because I think it's really important overall vision-wise, moving forward with that. And it will make next year a challenge. But I appreciate the lot, like I echo what Jeff says, a lot of work went into this, a lot of, a lot of effort. So thank you.
I guess I'll just add simply that I haven't been in this seat for decades, but it's been five years and this definitely has been the most challenging year thus far to try to get to our budget. So each year it gets harder and harder. And obviously, we want to go in the other direction and continue to try to push the district forward versus, you know, taking steps back. So that's, that's always tough to, to swallow. And I, I think that, you know, we'll have to think long and hard about that. And I think it's, you know, tough that, we're very fortunate that we have variables that we're able to leverage to get to this point. But they're variables and, you know, they're just things that have popped up that gave us the ability to do this. And that's not always going to be the case. So I think we are, to your point, fortunate in that regard, but certainly not, you know, where we want to be. But I appreciate all of the hard work because I, you know, to your point, Jeff, tons of effort that went into this and hard decisions that needed to be made. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll jump on the soapbox for a little bit now, too. I'll just, and I'll, for the record, I'll just point out, nobody asked anybody to move to try to be able to, to accommodate the staffing levels. But the, let me start by talking about what's in the budget. I think the STEM coordinator position is really important. We've talked about that at a lot of other meetings. But it's worth pointing out, whenever you add somebody to the administration, you want to make sure that, you know, as much is going to the students as we can. But I will point out that this has come up at a couple of their meetings, state average is four and a half percent of the funds going to district administration. Even with this position at North Reading, it's 3%. So, you know, quite a bit lower than what a lot of other people pay, you know, for district administrators. And so I think, you know, I want to thank the administration here because I think they take on a little bit more work than at some other districts. And it's important to recognize that. And so I think that's, that's one of the main reasons I really wanted to support this position because I don't want to overwork our administrators even more than they are already. And so, you know, we recognize that we need good leadership in order to have good teachers, good, you know, a good education. It's a bad year when you cut positions, you know, and it, we couldn't do everything we wanted to do, but we actually cut 1.4, you know, FTE positions, which is not a good day when you're on the school committee to cut positions. I will say, we tried to stick to our strategic plan as best we could. And so an easy thing to do would be say, let's not lower the fee for kindergarten, but we thought it was important to do so. You know, an easy thing to do would be say, don't add a new position, but, you know, in, in, in favor of other positions, but we had to do that. And so I think it's, you know, I appreciate, we gave that feedback before. I appreciate, you know, Michael and, and Dr. Daly, I appreciate you guys hearing us and giving us a plan that had that in there. I would also just point out that the financial problem's not $400,000. I mean, to get to that $400,000 gap, we had to increase the revenue projections. We added investment income that we haven't had in years past. Some of that's based, a lot of that's based on interest, which is higher than it's been in the past, and it's not always going to be that way. So we can't rely on that going forward. We added in $500,000 of one-time funds, which is free cash. We can't, we should not always be doing that. And we charge over a million dollars of fees to parents in this community. And so we are not $400,000 short, we're about $2.5 million short. And so I think that's an important thing to point out because we are making it meet, but we're doing it in ways that are not always prudent. And so I just, I just think it's worth putting that on there. But I will thank everybody as well. I'll, I'll thank the select board, finance planning team, Mr. Gilberto in particular. I think you've been great this year. Lori Ann as well, who stepped in. We lost the finance director in the middle of this process. And so she's done an amazing job. You know, Dr. Daly, and really more than anybody, Michael Connolly. I mean, you, you know, I tease you at times about being long, but like, you are amazingly detailed in this. You, I mean, I, I cannot imagine us without you. And so really genuinely appreciate everything that you do. I know there's a lot of hours on this. And, you know, and again, at the end of the day, we have to say yes or no to this. I mean, if, if anybody's upset, you know, you can blame me, I'm fine being blamed for it. But you do an amazing job of, you know, taking what's not enough money and making it work. And, and Michael Burdo, the same thing. I mean, I think you, your leadership does that on the, on the municipal side. So, you know, thank you. It's, it's a hard year. It's a bad year, but, you know, it's less worse than it could be, I guess. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Dr. Daly?
I could just echo that to you just a moment to just thank Michael for the process. This is, as Jeff mentioned, this is something we're doing every day. Michael's doing it all day, every day. I'm doing it with him for big parts of the day. But we have our financial planning team that meets throughout the year. I think that's what leads us to be successful in a difficult, challenging year especially. And, and I always feel and I appreciate Michael being, it's not Michael Liberto, but also, you know, there's always just a support for the school, right? There's advocacy for all of the importance of all the different boards in town. But I, I do feel that there is a genuine support for our needs in the school. We always feel that even when it's difficult, even when something can't happen, there's always that understanding of why it's important. And we're going to keep working to find a way to make it work. And so we appreciate all that support from everyone.
Yeah. The one thing I forgot to add was also from the finance planning team meeting last time, like when there was some new revenue from the state, you know, we have like, sort of like a working, you know, how we split that up. But, you know, the town, the municipal side was very, they appreciated the gap that we had this year. And so those additional funds came over to our side. And so very much appreciate that as well. So. Okay. There's no other comments or questions? I will entertain a motion that is typed out for us.
I move that the school committee approve and hereby adopt the final fiscal year 24 school operating budget of $37,319,595, which represents an increase of 4.5% or $1,610,265 over fiscal year 23. Second?
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any corrections to that or no?
I think we're just double verifying it?
Anybody have elevator music?
Discussion. The Jeopardy theme?
Let's have discussion on this. So.
That's a lot of music.
I appreciate the large font because I can see the most.
I know. I'm like, this is great.
Totally.
I have learned whenever I speak now, I can't just type it in 12. Like I did for the candidate night, I had like an 18 or 20.
Oh, and your notes?
So I could look down. Because this is like, I got, I used to be able to, and I'm like, what am I saying?
This is why I'm constantly switching glasses, right? It's like, don't get me started. Yeah. And, and I have progressive lenses on these, but they're not nearly as effective as these computer glasses. Or other way around.
I am moved.
Not quite there.
Are we correct?
Are we good?
Is this, this is probably the same question I asked him earlier. Was it about the $500,000, whether it should be in or not? Yeah, that's, yeah. Because our request is our request for the expenses and how it gets funded is different. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. And we move on. Actually, we move backwards. So first, we're going to go to the school choice vote. I turn this over to...
It's a public hearing, right?
Do we have to have a public hearing on it?
Thanks.
I open a public here, I open the public hearing. So, Mr. Connolly or Dr. Daly? I don't know who wants to lead us in this discussion.
Sure, I can.
Happy to do it. So, yeah, time has come to make the annual, have our annual hearing on school choice. There was a memorandum included in your packet that we put together as we typically do at this time of year. It really reflects some of our guidance on school choice. So essentially by, by electing into school choice, that gives certainly students from surrounding communities the right to attend North Reading schools. You can sort of opt into it at certain levels or, or grades and so forth. But it certainly, it certainly allows students from surrounding communities or to attend school within North Reading. We've historically opted not to be a school choice district. And I think some of the reasons why we've done that is certainly prudent, especially after the conversation we just had, where we do feel like adopting to elect into school choice under the fiscal constraints that we've all faced could result in additional funding challenges. Many of the schools, as we know, are already at class sizes that are at recommended levels, certainly in the elementary schools that we just talked about. And we feel potential of new school choice revenue would really just need to be used to increase staffing, to maintain those recommended levels. And it would not ideally be used to enhance programs. And that would really be ideally what you would look to be able to do if you were to elect into school choice. It really infuses the school department with additional revenue in, in year one. And then in future years, just like other budgetary offsets like busing and facility rental, it really becomes another budgetary offset to continue the program and support, support the staffing levels within these fiscal constraints that exist. We, we really, if there is, and there potentially could be, you know, projects that suddenly have an influx of families with school age children in North Reading, it could eliminate any access enrollment space that, that may exist for us to, to maintain our recommended class guidelines, class size guidelines. And then just to be clear, so school choice students would allow to be, to be, remain in North Reading until they graduate throughout the, throughout their educational career. There are really no neighboring school systems that are elected into school choice. So we could potentially, if we were to, to do that, we could impact chapter 70 revenue from surrounding communities. That could result in them needing to become school choice districts. And we could just be, be pulling chapter 70 revenue from, from different, different communities in the area. So I think it's, our, our recommendation this evening is to elect not to be school choice under the reasons I've discussed. Currently, the North Reading Public Schools has five school choice students that are attending student, schools outside the district. And four of those students attend Tech Connections Academy. And one student's attending Greater Commonwealth Virtual School. So we have kind of five sending students, not, non-receiving because we're not, we're not school choice.
And, and both of those schools are virtual schools?
Are virtual schools, correct.
And, and special, specialist, specialist schools.
Specialist-type schools, correct. Any other questions? Did I cover everything?
Good. I have a couple that I hadn't considered before as, you know, as we've considered in this past. So we received additional, we, a, a receiving district would receive additional revenue from chapter 70. Would that be like the minimum for, if we were to do it, would we be getting the, the same...
You get $5,000.
...per pupil that we currently get?
Oh, you get, it's fixed amounts, 5,000 per student.
And that's really the only extra revenue we would get.
Correct.
And whereas what we're spending per student is quite a bit higher.
Probably a lot higher.
Because we don't get some of the sending towns' tax dollars.
Correct.
Coming in. It's just the chapter 70.
Yep, correct.
Which is a, you know, I think, a, a real issue from a financial standpoint. So.
Yep, that's a good point.
The average student costs is 15,000?
We're up to 17,000.
17,000? Okay. So, no more discussion. Can I have a motion?
I, I, I just have one more comment about this.
Yep.
And I, and I kind of went off on this a little bit last year, too. I prefer that the motion states the real reason that we largely, that we just discussed as opposed to the, the motion that has been passed in the past and that was presented here of, of, you know, that the, that the program doesn't meet the educational needs of, of the Commonwealth, of some children of the Commonwealth. But I don't know how the rest of the committee feels about that. And I'm, I don't want to, I'm not going to die on that hill, but it feels like we should say what we think, which is we...
It's not right for us.
It's not right for us for financial, if, if, for no other reason, for, for financial reasons.
Make a, make a motion if you get a second.
Okay.
If anybody else wants to make a motion, opposed, or go from there.
I move that the school committee vote to not participate in school choice because of the financial burden that, that program might impose on our, on our, on our district.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other motions? Hearing none.
We can have competing motions?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
I did not.
All those in favor?
Just like, I want to do.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, okay.
Great.
Yes, unanimous. Thank you. There we go. Good job.
I did, sorry.
Having the two female voices next to me.
We should all switch it up every each time, so.
I was like, did I?
We make it far, we make it far too easy. Oh, yes. Now we need to...
I move that we exit the public, we probably should have voted it in, too.
We have to vote it, no, I just, I think it's just... We have to, we, you should know, I mean, do we have to vote to go in and out of public hearing or not? Okay.
So, yeah, we'll vote exit and it'll be the same people who motioned to go in. I move that we exit the public hearing on school choice.
Second?
The motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous.
Could I just ask a question?
Nope.
I mean, is it cleaner just to remove all the, just have the vote be very clean as we decide to vote now?
Yeah, we don't, we don't necessarily have to have a reason.
When I have to report it, and I, and I apologize, I do remember this discussion.
Yeah.
But it was a year ago, but I forgot. But, you know, the question is really just, will your district accept new school choice students? So.
The answer is no. You have to report.
So yes or no? So I'm wondering whether it's, is it just for the motion, just to make it that clean?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, for sure, personally.
And then the, the second question is always around preferential vocational programs. Michael, is that something we need to discuss? We, the question is always, it's more of just a survey question. So I don't know that we need to discuss that as a part of the hearing.
Okay.
The motivational part?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yep.
Something we haven't passed. Okay. School committee self-evaluation. Are we ready for this?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, can I share my screen or just to talk about it?
It should add.
All right, let me get, let me get that thing back up.
Giving you access or can make you a co-host, might give you some permission?
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. So it's the annual self-assessment time, which is fun. Before I get too much in...
Before I get too much into all of this, a couple of things, I'm not gonna read word by word. All of this will be entered into the record, people can read it for themselves, I'll go through the main points as we move along. The other thing I'll do is, is an introductory statement. It's interesting, looking at this as opposed to what was written last year, you think, oh, this is the first real true post-COVID self-analysis, then you really think about it a little more, you start using terms like new normal, or there are, there are new things to consider. And we saw some of that in the budget even of, you know, do we need to consider more to school adjustment counselors? We looked at academic influences or, or results of remote learning and all of that, so it's, it sort of is, but it sort of is, while we're not considering things like lockdowns or masks or those sorts of things, we're still dealing with what happens after all of those things took place, so. All of that is an introduction. We'll go through the main sections. The, the leadership and governance, I, I think we'd all say here that we did a, we did a pretty good job in terms of, of putting things in perspective in our meetings, we did a good job of managing these meetings, especially considering our chairperson, Scott, in terms of the public comments. We've made some adjustments to those comment sections. And I'll talk about that more in a, in a different section. But these have been effective meetings. When we've had to talk about topics like budgets, we've had to talk about new policies, when we've had to talk about fees, all of that has happened. And when you look across the board, I didn't count across all of them, but we've been well over 90% unanimous in our votes. And I don't think that's because anybody felt pressured, it's because we've got consensus amongst our board and because we're trying to do the right things. So I think that shows us working together in, in a way that's productive. When we disagree or when we have different thoughts, I think we voice those thoughts and then we work through it and we vote accordingly. I would say are probably our area, and this, this will come a little later, our area of most need of improvement would be professional development. And while there have been some opportunities that we've taken advantage of in terms of, of school committee, for lack of a better way to put it, academic enhancement, I think that's an area where we probably could do a little bit better in terms of taking advantage of some opportunities that are out there. For, for the educational section. And again, all of this will be available, people can go line by line and, and feel free not to hear my muppet-like voice. I think every time educational topics have come up in this, in this setting, we've done, we've done a very good job of providing resources as needed, whether it's new opportunities, whether it's balancing between making sure we've got the right balance between academics and, and other opportunities, we all, such as extracurriculars. We don't say it's either or, we say, okay, how do we, how do we get everything done? How do we enhance the most students all of the time? And again, a lot of that is due to Dr. Daley and, and Mr. Colleen and, and Mr. Connolly, and making sure they have what they need for resources to get their jobs done. Whether it's budget, budgetary needs, or when you talk about Mr. Colleen, making sure he has the curriculum leverage to do what he has to do with our classrooms up and down the, the school system in North Reading. So, again, I think, I think they've done a, a great job of continuing academic excellence in the schools. And I think that, that starts in some ways from us, but it's really more due to the leadership of, of the superintendent and the, and the staff he's got. As I see a couple of typos that I've got on there, that's great. So, again, just going down a little bit further, financial, financial and asset management. We just went through this exercise right now. I mean, this was, this is a difficult exercise in a tight budget. But something that, you know, I, I've said it in certain other settings, but I will say it publicly so that everybody can hear it. When there are training sessions for school committee, and these are statewide sessions, our town is used as the fiscal model. No joke, North Reading gets used as the, as the model for fiscal responsibility and, and how to manage budget for the entire state. So, Mr. Connolly, that is, they specifically cite you in those, in those sections, so thank you for your great work. But we, we live in a community that does an exceptional job of managing the budget, that knows how to manage the budget. And from our perspective, it makes our jobs a lot easier on this board. And I don't think that's the case across, across other communities that we, that we all know. There are a lot of priorities that can't always get, can't always get taken up, but I also think we do a good job of sticking to the big rocks that we're committed to over the next bunch of years and reflect that in the, in the budget, whether it's reducing kindergarten costs or whether it's trying to reduce fees. Or it's, okay, we, we wanna keep something else in the budget, how do we, how do we offset? So I think we've done a very good job of that as well. And, and again, that's only gonna get more challenging as we, as we face the future. The family and community relations. I, I can speak for myself and I can see, I can safely say, I've seen just about everybody here, if not everybody here, at different events. And yes, there's an element of that of, oh, we've got kids in the community and we're participating in that. I can name a bunch of events where people on this board don't have kids in, in, involved in events and yet you're still there. Everybody here goes to everything, it's because we like, we like the product that is being produced and we appreciate it, but we also like the town we live in and we like the people that are in it as well as the kids and we appreciate all of it. And I, and I think that really goes, it's reflection, we are a reflection of the community we live in. I think that is an accurate reflection, I think that's why we get so much great community involvement in, in all of the events we see. And I think there's also a reason why, you know, I think part of it's the opportunity the school gives, part of it is that attitude as to why we have such success in the arts and athletics and everything else is because we're into it, we're all into it. And I think if, if there was the brightest spot in all of this, and I think there's a lot of, a lot of good stuff, I would say, community involvement and, and family relations, I think is a real shining spot of this board and of the work we do. And, and the other thing I would say is, you know, we all say that the presentations that we see at school board meetings are the shining elements of, of why we do this. And I agree with that, but look at the number of times we see those and we're impacted by it. Whether it's in that moment or we go see a bocce tournament, or suddenly we're going to see the all, all-town chorus, or we're going to do an event based on something that has been told to us or expressed to us here, or we go, we'll stop by the, the art exhibit that's in the hallway. It, it has a real impact on us and again, I think that's a great reflection on us as well as, and more importantly, the people that are presenting to us, so I think that's great. Why don't I pause there, cause, as my colleagues here, but also that I work with during the day can tell you, I can talk for an hour without taking a breath. So, why don't I stop there for a minute and say, ask if there are any questions based on anything I've said or any additional comments?
No, just thanks for doing such a great job, Jeff. Appreciate it. Made my load very easy.
No, all good. No, it's all good. So, we, we then added into, into this evaluation, specific goals. And, and we tried to, this year's a little different than previous years, we're actually doing this evaluation months earlier than we ordinarily would've, which means it, it gave us, I think, what, three fewer months to, to accomplish these goals than, than a normal year, so. There's, we have to take a little bit of that into account too. But we put our specific goals that we agreed to last fall into this evaluation too, so I'm showing those right now. And there, there, there are a number of them here, again, I'll, I'll put some of the highlights in here, cause you don't really wanna hear me reading the next 30 minutes. And again, professional development is one where I think we, we really, we didn't meet the, the standard that I think we really wanted to set for ourselves. And that's okay to be honest about that sort of thing in terms of, we need to do more. We need to, we need to keep striving to get better. I think we did a good job, but I don't think we were where we need to be. Hey, look, everybody needs opportunities for improvement, I think that's, that's our biggest one. In terms of reviewing policies, we, we did do a good job of policies, I will say, when it comes to school security and safety plans, you know, Dana, you're really, you, you really took the ball with that, I, I cannot take credit for that at all. So, let's call it what it is, thank you for your work and, and your efforts on that. And we saw tangible improvements on that this year. That, the changes were put into effect that we all agreed to vigorously. And that's as a result of the work of the, the school administration as well as your work, so thank you.
If I could, the cooperation at RPD.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. Thank, thank you. In terms of financial, asset management, the big one there is, is kindergarten and exploring how we can, how we can get it universally free, we're on a path there. We just talked about the fiscal challenges. I will note that we are once again, this isn't the first time, we are once again reducing those fees, I think that is phenomenal. I think having access to, to a great system like ours needs to be free, but it's, it, it can't be done overnight without taking a bigger financial hit. And I think we made a good step this year and we need to continue making good steps, so I think, I think we absolutely went on the right path there. Solar, which we rejected this year. Nothing has substantially changed in terms of solar grants or monetarily, so it was really more of a research project. But that, you know, that's, it's, it's just something that, it, it's good to look out, I think it's good that we, we keep exploring those opportunities, but there's not much to change there.
And, and Jeff, just to, just to add to that point that our goals were to research things, not to necessarily.
Correct.
It doesn't mean that we have to change anything, it doesn't mean we're gonna get full day kindergarten, but just to make sure that outside of these meetings, that individually we're, you know, having smaller group meetings, looking at opportunities, looking at things that we wanna do, so. As long as those things happened, it's a success that they happened, so.
No, agreed. And, you know, for the, for the next one, dealing with, uh, school committee will develop and, and develop strategies and prefer, preserve positions and supports that were implemented in part with, with SRF funding. I think to the best of our ability, we've, we've done that. Again, tough year, but done the best we can. And then the next one is one we've talked, again, a lot about and I think we've got some, some differences of opinion in terms of how we've done there. But in terms of understanding and doing research on, on fee structures and impacts to extracurricular and academic athletic activities, I, I would say, again, it's, to Scott's point, we've started the research on it. And I think that's going to be a much longer term. It's going to be a much longer term project, as we've seen. It's, it's not as cut and dried as, oh, let's just cut things or, or let's keep the fees where they are. I mean, it's, it's a much more complex, as we knew, discussion. And I think we started on that path and I think we've made some good strides on, on that path. So, I think in the coming year, we will see even more, more progress. And I told you I wasn't reading them and here I am, reading them all. Again, it's, the next one that gets in here and this is the universal design for, for learning and multi, multi-tier systems of supports. Again, I think this is something that we've talked about and we've had discussion about and I think this is an ongoing, an ongoing initiative that we will also see progress over time. I think we've done a good job with it, I think we certainly have met the initial goals, but I think it's something that's, it's just gonna be a longer term initiative, which is, which is the right way to think about it. Policies and, and how to provide hybrid public meetings and, and how do we actually have these meetings? Well, the meeting laws, I believe it was extended for, it wasn't indefinitely, I think it's another year or two.
Couple of years, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a couple of years. I, and it's written in here, I should have read it. I think that's great, you know, hopefully the state keeps extending it. And it, it certainly makes things a bit easier on us, but I, I do believe this is another opportunity for us to, to expand our communication out into the community. And I think that's always fantastic. And then the last one here is, is working with the, the Educational Parent Advisory Council. I, I certainly think, Scott, you've done a great job reaching out and, and working with that group. So again, I, I think we've done a good job, I think obviously there's some areas for improvement, but a lot of these are designed to be ongoing initiatives, I think you'll see some of these keep recurring. We, we will obviously change some of these initiatives as we develop new goals, but I think we've done a good job advancing the ones that we have and we will alter them as we need to, but keep pushing the ball forward on our goals, so, there you go. Not too painful.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any other comments?
My, my one comment and suggestion for next year, so there's two different pieces to this. The first is just the self-evaluation of various categories. I think that we should do alone. I think the second part on our goals is a little more challenging because when one or two people are leading them, it's hard for everybody to comment on like whether Noel's done her homework or not, you know, or whether I've done my homework or not. And so, we did an update halfway through the year. I wonder if next year what we do is we do an update kind of halfway through the year and then at the end, we have a meeting where we go through them. And we can almost fill out then and say whether they're completed or not, just in the meeting together doing it, because it'll kind of be like the final update and then from that meeting, we could then put that it wasn't accomplished or it was accomplished. So that would be my suggestion for next year is that maybe the self-evaluation is done separately that gets put in. But then the actual goals, we go over in a meeting and we sort of agree whether they're done or not done. Dr. Daley?
Just a thought on that, what if you, what if you still kept it here, but just use this as the, as, as a, another update and then we do a final evaluation of that part prior to writing the new goals, right? So that, the, the piece that's in the, you know, the, the evaluation part is done prior to the election. The goal update is done prior, the second goal update is done prior to the election, but then the final one is done right here. It's just.
Yeah.
That makes sense. I, I think the challenge will be to keep that discussion from being three hours long.
But I don't think they have to be all updates or whatever, I think, cause I think a few of them we would have already done.
Yeah, I just feel like we'll start talking about something and we'll go on for 20 minutes and then it'll be the, and we have only done one thing.
Just keep remembering the phrase, Jeff be quiet, it'll be fun.
Yeah.
That wasn't the name that popped into my head.
Yeah.
I also think having like the, the timeline be different this year, it seems like, wow, this came up fast because, you know, I felt like we were just writing these.
Well, I, I think that makes sense of sort of separating the two a little bit.
Well, I just think, I mean, for, for the record though, I mean, like having, we're all over the place on whether they were accomplished or not accomplished.
Yeah.
We should all know whether they were accomplished or not, and so the fact that we don't all know is a concern. And so maybe even just taking that suggestion and doing one more update on these ones, don't say these are final yet and we'll update those and the next time we set the meeting, we set the goals, we'll sort of figure out. Cause that, that'll also roll over or whatever, and some of these are going to be multi-year goals anyways.
Right.
I think some of these years, these are gonna continue to the next year, so.
And I think there's, I, I think we're moving in the right direction. Yeah, and I think there's, I, I think we're moving in the right direction, the way we're setting the goals.
Yeah.
I think even these can be refined, can be refined some. I, I think about.
Absolutely.
I think about the, the two about the universal design for learning and, and the work on the diversity, equity, the equity, diversity, inclusion and belonging are, you know, to me are, those are efforts just to, A, participate in those efforts, but also to learn about them and be able to speak to them. And, and it's part of communicating to the community and just being able to understand. So that's a long-term project, so.
Agreed.
And when do we set the goals typically? Because we did them later last year, so.
We typically do them in late summer, August. I think that timeline makes sense. I think in a year where there's definite transitions on the committee, it makes a lot of sense to do something now and then you kind of discuss where you are and then as new people come in, are they going to pick up those goals from now until August when we reset?
Right.
So I, I think, I think we can tweak this a little bit and it makes sense. Add a couple of comments if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, there were some notes in there that I noticed about the public comment piece. I think that's something certainly we can discuss through a policy subcommittee. I think that's something worth looking at along with many others. We have a list that we looked at last time of things to catch up on there. The DEIB group, I think I would, I would extend to anyone working on that goal or anyone to come. We have one remaining meeting this year. Those meetings have been somewhat action oriented and also just astounding good. It's become, when we talk about belonging, I quickly realized that some people were coming to that meeting because they wanted an opportunity to be heard and they thought that was the vehicle. And at first I was like, this is more the action group, but then I'm like, no, if people need to talk, they're going to talk. So I think the more voices they hear at those meetings is great. So even if you can come to one or come for a few minutes to feel heard is important. So I would encourage folks to come if they can and we can share that out.
Yeah, I feel like I missed, I must have missed one or two that were scheduled.
Yeah, and it's, it's been a little, you know, we've tried different things this year. We tried them at night, we tried them here, so we will share that out. The meeting accommodations, I certainly think the extension, we can continue what we're doing here and continue that moving forward. I just want to say in general, I think it's important for my, my opinion of, of my evaluation just to share, because you get to do that for me. But honestly, I, I do think as a committee, you are very collaborative and cooperative. And I think, I've been saying a lot to folks as I watch this play out in other places. I think having a balance of ideas, I think we have a spectrum of ideas that we're very respectful of different opinions and I think there's good dialogue. There's, there's a lot of consensus, there's, there's certainly not arguing back and forth. But I think there's a lot of discussion that leads to consensus. And it's not always unanimous agreement, but there's consensus, which I think is so important in a group. And I, I do feel that that's well represented here. And I appreciate the feedback that I receive. We get a lot of agreement here when I bring forward an idea, when Michael brings forward an idea, when Sean brings forward an idea. But I think you're putting in a lot of time and effort with phone calls or emails, discussions with me or my team prior to the meeting so that we have that consensus ongoing. And we're not coming in here and, and starting something in public session. Always, you know, always following the, the rules and the obligations of open meeting, but also through our, our understanding of, you know, what's expected of us. And I appreciate the charge even with the budget to, you know, to really, you've got a vision, deliver on that vision. I appreciate those kind of commands that, that help us bring something forward to make it work as well as it does. So thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, I would just add, I think we can have different ideologies, we can have different opinions, but I think there's a working respect that we all have for each other. And that's the most important thing. And I also think that we've always tried here, we could just easily pass something three to two, but sometimes even the fee discussion on the buses, we could have gotten a three, three to two vote on it a lot quicker than we voted, but instead we got to a five-O vote, which was a compromise of what we came in looking for. And so I think that's really important that we can, you know, we can at least talk to each other, we can see each other's perspectives, we can understand. And the reality is we represent a community that is diverse and, you know, and it's not, you know, very liberal or very conservative. And there's different people in our community. And I think we can take into account all those different, you know, viewpoints and try to find something that, even if we want to do this, maybe we can make a small adjustment to it, which would make it better received by everybody. And so, you know, we take the time to do that rather than just trying to get home and watch the Bruins tonight, so.
Oh. Is that why you put in Bruins shirts on?
Thanks.
Nudge, nudge, wink, wink.
And, and thank you, Jeff, and Noel for doing this, but Jeff for presenting it and.
Okay.
Can I say one last thing?
No.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
But there is so much more time that the two of you put into finance planning that goes like above and beyond what I could ever even commit to and like where we got to, like just the advocacy you guys have and the time that you put into that. I mean, there's, there should be something acknowledged there because it is, for those like in the public that don't know, it's a lot more time than we do as just a regular board member. And appreciate that and I think you guys do a phenomenal job.
You're here, agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say those meetings are never hard. They can be boring. But they're never like contentious, I guess sort of the same thing, they're never contentious or, you know.
My first year on it, it was very contentious.
Things have changed and I think it's for the better for the town, just overall, the way things have changed.
And again, that's what, I need for people to understand, there's a lot of, a lot of people at different subcommittees and some of them take longer than others and, yeah, I mean, I think.
It's a big one.
It's, it's been balanced, which is nice too, which is a lot of, a lot of people step up, so thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
We have some minutes.
All right.
Minutes person?
Got it. The minutes person is ready. I move to approve the executive session minutes for the school committee meeting on March 27th, 2023 as written.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve the open session minutes for the school committee meeting on March 27th, 2023 as written.
Second.
We have a second, a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
All right. I move to approve the open session fiscal year 2024 budget workshop minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 3rd, 2023 as written.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve the open session minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 10th, 2023 as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous. No, I want her to jump in, just to.
No, I, I'm trying to keep things simple.
I think that's it.
Causing trouble over here.
I am.
I think I'm good.
Okay, budget update, Mr. Connolly, we had a budget update in here.
So shouldn't be a budget update this year.
No, I think, I think it was related, that memorandum was related to the 24 budget.
It was.
Okay. So, I mean, everything in else? In fiscal '23?
Yeah, I think it says included in D2 fiscal '24 budget vote.
It was just, I mean, yeah, we went, we went over, I think, everything in there.
Yeah, yeah. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a budget update for fiscal '23.
I think, I think you're just referring back to.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Moving on, staffing, none at this time?
None at this time.
Bids and donations?
Looks like we've got a few here. I move that the school committee vote to accept, they're all nice, I shouldn't say that, right? They're all nice. That the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $10,205 from the North Reading High School Hornet Hall of Fame to purchase weight room equipment to benefit the students of the high school.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $50 from Andrew Graham to support the North Reading High School track and field team.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $50 from Laura McCoy to support the North Reading High School track and field team.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Grants, none at this time?
None at this time.
The only thing I'll point out about grants is that I read the STEM coordinator position again this morning. One of the positions, one of the pieces of that was also to try to, you know, do more grant writing as well. Do you think there's a lot of, do you think there's more opportunities out there that we're not, we're not going for or?
There's always, you know, the more time put into it, the more you can find, especially if they're connected to programs and curriculum and, and.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Definitely, I'm not thinking of entitlement ones or, you know, these are more.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Subcommittee update, finance planning team met April 14th and April 25th. And I think you've heard everything we've been looking at.
Yep.
And we have one next week too, I think. Yeah, we're scheduled to meet on June 5th at 8:00 AM. Athletic Subcommittee is scheduled to meet on May 23rd at noon. Fine Arts Subcommittee is scheduled to meet at May 24th at 3:15 PM. Are there any other updates for CIPC?
Yeah, CIPC met on the 24th to approve the final rankings, which then went forward to the Select Committee, so.
Do we have an idea what we're getting at?
Yes, so.
CIPC.
We essentially have three projects funded. The hood school boilers, the hood and little school window replacements, and the middle school and the high school wifi access point upgrade project.
What was the middle one? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Window replacement.
Window replacements, yeah.
What didn't make the cut? Can you remind me?
So the instructional interactive boards, essentially smart board replacements, the beginning of that process in this building.
Yeah.
And the wireless clock system at the elementary schools.
Got it.
And we optimistically talked about possibly rolling that into the budget, but I guess that's not going to happen this year.
It's a challenge, that would be a challenge. I mean, we could look at, you know, facility rental as, as options, but it's, it'd be a challenge.
Finding out of expenses at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yes.
For sure.
Potentially, yeah.
And just remind me that Diana got more last year on CIPC than Jeff got this year, right?
That's true.
Just pointing out.
We got everything last year, I think.
It's not a competition.
We got everything.
They were giving away, they were giving stuff away last year.
I know. But the hood school boilers will be, that will be a significant upgrade. That's a great project. Now will actually lead to some savings, we believe, once that's done. Efficiency savings. So.
Did you have a question?
There's no financial meeting in May at all.
Oh, it's May.
Yeah, you said.
Yeah, it's June.
Yeah, is it May 5th?
We're certainly meeting before.
It says June 5th, sorry, it's May 5th.
I have it here, May 5th, Cinque de Mayo. Sorry.
May 5th, sorry. And, yeah, the only other thing we should think about for next year too is like for CIPC, last year we got into a discussion on the modular replacements. And when we do our goal setting, I think we need to start thinking about that as well. That's another thing, that's a big upcoming project that.
That was talked about. Mr. Connolly did talk about that, actually.
Yeah. About the modulators and.
It did, yeah.
And about possibly extending onto the hood as opposed.
Yep. So that's in our capital plan. It got presented, they're, they're aware of it. Dawn's referenced it a few times in the long term, so. Yeah.
And the roof project, do you still have that on the plan?
That's on the plan for next, for funding in fiscal '25. Obviously with the assumption that the MSBA's accelerated repair program kind of ends their kind of embargo and those projects get except.
We know why that, they, they closed it for this year.
Yeah, it was mainly resulting because the, the cost of steel and, and everything was so uncertain based on everything that's happening with, I guess, supply shortages and inflationary that they, things were changing so much rapidly with the budget, so they, they put a hold on it.
Well, I, I had heard that the approved, the approved projects were so much more expensive already.
Right.
They also needed to catch up with the ones that had already been approved.
Yes.
Because they were going to cost more than.
Correct.
Because if they'd originally approved a project that was $500,000, it was 30% over budget. I think that was our case of this.
Yeah. Dr. Daly, any update for administrative report?
So a lot was covered with the student rep. I did want to share something, there's an article going around with the top high school sports programs in the state. And North Reading came in at number 18 for the overall niche grade of an A.
An A, yeah.
Yeah, that is, that is really great. And, you know, you've got some elite private prep schools that are, that are ahead of us and we are one of the top public high schools in the state.
And what are those rankings based on like just involvement or scoring or?
It does, yeah. I can share out the link to this article as well. And I believe it doesn't even include parts of this year, which I think we're only going to do better based on our, some of our performances that we've done.
That's great.
So parent surveys on sports, high school enrollment, championships, number of sports, athletic participation rates. So.
That's great.
That is great. Although I, I just need to make sure everybody is aware that last night's candidate night, Scott took full credit for the football championship and the one act play championship, so.
Full credit.
Full credit.
Full credit, so.
Great job.
Full credit, so. Under my leadership, so it happens.
We have the Sing Fling coming up and we have some other great spring concerts in the works.
Do, do we know what percentage of students played at least one sport this year or what percentage was participated in a club or in performing arts? I'm just curious, like what percentage of our students are doing something? Yeah.
You give the numbers of participants, so you're saying individual.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to look.
Does every kid participate in something?
Like, I'm just curious, like, I'm curious if like.
Who wants unique participation?
Well, I guess, yeah, like if 75% of kids are involved in at least something here, you know?
That's a great thing you wanted to analyze.
At least.
Yeah. I mean, some of the, I'm looking at my user field, could you answer that?
I have it all separated by, by.
He's got enough on his plate.
The analysis.
I think it's a good question.
I don't think that would even reflect in rankings.
You don't have to deal with the budget anymore. Come on.
I mean, I know there's, but there's obviously, there's duplicates there. So, like, there's eight hundred and fifty students.
You need, you need unique values.
In disciplines in athletics, but obviously there's duplicates.
A lot of them play multiple.
I thought, I thought, I thought, um, Mr. Johnson at one of our, uh, athletic subcommittee meetings mentioned something along the lines of seventy percent.
I think, I think that's about right with sports. I think if you're adding in extracurriculars and you're adding in, I mean, to see, it's, it's a small number of students that aren't involved in anything. We actually had this discussion with the town around youth services and, you know, is youth services trying to help target some of the students who are not engaged in other things at the middle and high school? Or are they supplementing, complementing? Like, so that's a conversation that's ongoing. So.
Yeah.
We can definitely use that question to help frame.
I'm sure there's a percentage of that, even though it's a little deceptive. I mean, you could be playing a club team for, uh, for like hockey.
Equestrian and athletics.
Right, right. Exactly.
Figure skating, things that we don't.
We don't have an equestrian program here?
Yeah, yeah.
We should.
The miniature horses.
Yeah, the miniature horses and the equestrian program. But, um, no, that, that's another reason why it's good that I love to see these club requests, you know? So, maybe somebody doesn't do anything but knitting club, but they do knitting club. I mean, chess club and all that kind of stuff.
Diana said she was doing it. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have you actually done it?
Done what? Knitting club?
Yeah.
No. In my spare time?
Like, absolutely, yes.
You all said you were coming to Dungeons and Dragons club. I haven't seen.
I never said that. I never said that.
Who said that? Somebody said Dungeons and Dragons.
I will absolutely.
I rolled the dice. It didn't come up positive.
Okay. Any correspondence?
None at this time.
So, upcoming meetings, May eighth, we're at the bachelor school, correct?
Uh, correct.
Barring no surprises, next Tuesday I'll be there. May twenty-second at the little school, June, June twelfth.
Heck of a surprise.
Strong writing campus.
June, June twelfth, we have a meeting before we have town meeting. So, we have a, we're meeting at five o'clock and then we'll go down to the town meeting at seven o'clock. So.
That one is here. Yeah.
And that is our meeting in here and then we're going down there. So.
I, I have a quick question about that. Um, we've been talking in these meetings about wanting to present something at town meeting. Is that a finance subcommittee? Like, are you, like, or is that all of us? Like, who is?
It's a great question. I don't think it's quite resolved.
Yeah, I mean, I think we had talked at the neck, at finance planning team next week, we're gonna, the finance committee is putting together some charts to show some more things that are gonna go in that, in that town warrant article. I think that we, I, I know that Mr. Gilberto will probably be presenting on some of the things that are not getting into the budget on the municipal side. And I suppose either myself or somebody else or Mr. Connolly, whoever, I guess it could be me. I mean, like, we'll also be presenting what is not getting in there. And anybody that feels comfortable talking about it can stand up and do that. But, and if some of it will probably be in the slides in the presentation that, so we're gonna give some of that information. So, I don't know how much we need to individually speak about it, but we are working to give some of that information to them to see sort of like what didn't make it and.
Yeah, I, like a strong visual to show people like this is the pain. This is what we had to struggle with.
Correct. And, yeah, that'll happen. And, yeah, I think, I think we're probably gonna, I, I'll probably be, I'll probably speak also on at least one of the write-in warrant articles soon. So, it'll be, um, yeah, when the town war comes up. I think they'll all be in there. So. But we'll, we'll do, at the meeting before town meeting, we'll look at the, if we need to take positions on anything and, uh, obviously we'll wanna recommend, we'll wanna recommend the budget ones for sure. And I think, I think anything that impacts the school, we might wanna make, take a vote on. So. Okay.
A slightly happier note. Wouldn't, uh, what date's graduation?
It is the sixth, um.
Of June?
Sorry, the ninth. The reverse, sixth is a Tuesday. Okay. June ninth.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
A motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, everyone.